All right, good evening, everyone. This is going to open up the Ballpark City Council Special Meeting for July 20, 2016. At this point, anyone who'd like to speak on a public communication meeting.
Mayor, if I could, the city attorney types of things that he's talking about.
All right, this one. All right, just start the program. Okay. I want to speak on the development that you're going to be looking at again. I don't know what it's going to take, but, you know, we keep reiterating that we have the traffic problems across the street. We haven't even finished Rome. We don't even know what this is going to be like. He wants to build over by the -- it's industrial, which is a bad corner with that B there, which Mayor, you know, you live over in that area. And we have the train and we have everything else. I don't know why everybody consistently keeps trying to push this thing, but, you know, the last meeting he had, he swore he was going to go talk to all these people, the concerned business owners and stuff around there. None of that's been done. What's been done is, is a new plan, work around any spot that he can use for land, and they're still going to try and build over by our area, which we have all the business owners there are in protest of it. And the land over here, I don't know if they're going to work with the car wash or whatever, but that's not for sale. So, and there's, I mean, the domain is not an option. So, I don't know what he's trying to do. And it wastes a lot of city time and a lot of people coming here to fight for this thing, and it needs to stop. And you guys need to think smart. First, let's get Rome in and see how much traffic you're going to have congested. You don't even know what you're going to take up there in the parking structure yet. So, we're trying to do all this thing all at one time, and there's certain individuals that are getting profit out of it, and we need to stop it. And we need to make sure that we do smart. Smart building. And let's stop trying to condense in the middle of town. And that's what we're doing. We're trying to cram all this in the middle of town. These people will own cars, just like we have over here with the parking permits. You found out those people own two and three cars, apartment owners. Okay? This is going to happen here in Rome. This is going to happen over here, too. We don't need this in our downtown area. We need money coming in with people, with businesses, and everything else that we can go stores and that type of thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one last, anyone else? Okay, now, this is going to go to the public communication. All right, you know, at this point, it's going to -- oh, Secretary is not here for close second.
Do you want to do the presentation?
Okay, just go on the presentation at this point. So, all right, so, at this point, we're going to have a presentation on potential downtown development project presented by Walberg McAlaveney, potential development project options.
Good, good.
Your main, our point is here, the additional slide is there, so, just kind of advance and go back and laser pointer.
Okay, good evening, Mayor.
Members of the City Council.
Thank you for taking this matter into consideration tonight in the study session. You know, we've been under E&amp;A with the city for the last 120 days approximately. During that time, we've gone through multiple site plan iterations on the two sites that we've been working on. The one is Main Pacific and the other one is Bedio, Ramona, for redevelopment. We have the firm of Humble Dawn Enterprises in Orange County prepared a market study, which is very extensive, about 175-page market study, to look at what the best product and most feasible product. And what was really interesting about their study was, it really highlighted the point that no new multifamily Class A residential product has been built in this city in 45 to 55 years. The majority of the multifamily product that exists is two-story lockup and is substandard as far as amenities, ceiling heights, and other types of things that are common in today's buildings. And we were very surprised that both sites came back with very high marks for this type of Class A luxury multifamily product in this location. In fact, they're very excited about Baldwin Park as an infill location. And the rents came back at a fairly strong number of close to $2 a square foot on average, which leads to high income and high disposable dollars that are being spent. You know, one of the comments that was just made was that we need money in businesses in downtown. And I've been saying this since day one. Businesses don't come to a downtown. And money doesn't come to a downtown unless there are residences and occupancy in a downtown. And these projects that we're proposing on both sites are going to breed. The first site is Main Pacific at 72 minutes. The other site, Bedio, is 40 minutes. And we designed both of these 100% in accordance with the codes that are allowed for in your downtown specific plan division. This downtown specific plan overlay was designed for transit-oriented type developments, for residents to come, to invigorate your downtown and to bring businesses. Good businesses, the Starbucks, the Chipotle's, other types of restaurants, don't come to a downtown unless there's a concentration of housing and a concentration of people, and most importantly, a concentration of disposable income. And I think the history of the tenancy and the occupancy and the types of tenants that are long in Ramona really shows this. And both these projects, the market rate, Class A luxury buildings, are going to bring that type of housing to the downtown. So, I brought Eric from Sumo Architects, who designed both projects, to give you guys some details so I don't show it on time. But the end result, the net result is, we've done the market study, we've provided the city with financial wherewithal to perform on both these projects. We've got the underwriting done, and at this point, we're here to request that the City Council allows us to proceed to negotiate the development disposition and funding E&amp;A in the city because our E&amp;A expires next month.
Now, Eric, well, go ahead. No, if you'd like to.
The parking, what's the parking like? I mean, well, first of all, what's the, what's the average square footage on this?
So, on the Bedio site, we're basically on both sites from about 575 square feet up to about 950 square feet, one- and two-bedroom apartment units. Both sites are parked above the minimum requirement for, for the specific plan. Again, we, our firm works from National City Clear up to Richmond in the Bay Area. We do a lot of transit-oriented projects, Long Beach, Upland, San Marcos, so we're very familiar with the parking needs, the demands, the constraints, and all those types of things. Montclair, we just had a project approved a few weeks ago. At one stall per unit is the requirement there. So, Long Beach is about 1 and 1/4, 1 and 3 quarter, you know, 1.375. So, these sites are within the realm of that. Again, Baldwin Park has a very great opportunity with, with the center of town being at the transit. So many centers of town are not right on the, on the transit, so that really helps, I think, the long term. On the Bedio site that's, that's on the screen now, we've pulled off the corner to, to create that opportunity for public art. Kept the buildings at a, at a smaller scale rather than one large building to, to help more integrate with the existing fabric. We have stayed away from the Pacific, the red car existing building, so we're in feasibility looking at the costs and the, and the challenges that'll be associated with that. On the main site then, real quickly, we've maintained the existing connection through Pacific for vehicular access. We've introduced the alley as, as is important to provide future opportunities to the retail off of Ramona. You know, the degree to which there can be a pedestrian connection through in the future, we've maintained that and used that as a centering element for the project. Kind of started to introduce, you know, some type of plaza perhaps on the King Taco end, so, and parked it and done those things. So, we're trying to activate this and set this up for the future improvements along the backside of the retail as is outlined in the specific plan, while also maintaining the connections through on the existing, existing street and parking that street. Bringing residential down at the ground level to activate the pedestrian edge, so actually there are front doors and stoops there, create the public plaza to, to balance with the, with the City Hall Plaza, and to really establish that gateway connection into, into the retail area of Ramona. Provide our recreation and amenity areas, our leasing office, those types of things on Main so that we, we bring Ramona around the corner and down into the plaza space. And then also then respect the Sterling site as well with residential.
What's the, what's the square footage?
These, these square footages again are about 575 to 950 square foot, one- and two-bedroom.
So, the same as?
Yeah, similar, yeah. The market study came back with very similar, within 25 square feet or so of, of that. We're, so, yeah, so the, the main is 72 homes, and it'll be three and four-story, and we're trying to create a lot of movement in the upper floors and, and massing changes and things. And then the Bedio site we've proposed is three-story. So, that would be more this type of scale development. And whether it's, you know, leans to more of a traditional or leans more contemporary, all of those types of things would still be worked through yourselves and the planning staff and the community at large, so.
Can we go back, Eric?
Yes.
On this, you say the stoops are facing that strong.
Yeah, so the orange, the orange areas would be, would be ground floor front doors. In fact, this, the center image on this is a, is our transit-oriented project in San Marcos, a very similar type of character where you do have that front, front door edge that's activated. In some cases, we have dens, you know, dens or small bedrooms or, you know, those types of things to activate that edge. So, the parking, we try to, you know, tuck that in and hide that as much as we can.
What is the parking?
So, the parking here, you have the parking on the street parking on, that you can see the open, and then the, the rest of the parking is all internal to the building, so you don't see those stalls from the, from the building.
The first floor of the building is parking?
Right.
And then the, the second, third, and fourth story is about that or what it is.
Yeah. And then we roll, and then to hide that parking, we roll those, some of those homes down over the edge of that, that parking edge to hide that structure. So, you know, some cities you'll see that has the kind of the parking grill down on the ground floor. So, by bringing, letting those units be more townhouse-type units to roll that edge, we then can create living opportunities, front doors, and hide that parking.
And then do you want some stairs that are probably the other?
You can, well, the good news about those types of units is, it's really, it gets to be a more multi-generational type of unit because you do have the elevator-served, you know, corridor type on the second floor, so your main living level is all on that level. So, let's say your, your grandparents or something are, you know, are there and you have a, you know, someone bouncing back from college or whatever, they could be on that ground floor, for example, and then we'd have the, the main level living dining kitchen and a bedroom on the second floor. So, it's a townhouse, but it's kind of an upside-down elevator-served townhouse, so it really meets a huge market segment. It's a very popular, you know, solution to, to what otherwise people.
These are three, three stories?
Three, three and four-story, yeah, right. Just on the main site, the Bedio site is only three stories, yeah.
So, when I have this construct in the middle, in the middle of town, across the street from City Hall, I, I saw the renderings when Shannon sent them to me, and I feel that Baldwin Park in the last 25, 30 years has become like a hodgepodge of designs, depending on what's popular at the time. We have the Rome project that is totally different to any of the designs that Juice invented, which is almost like whoever the developer or whoever the builder is comes up with their concept and we just put it there. It's like if you had a Tuscan-style home and then all of a sudden you have a, an old 50s-style home and you go on and on and on. We have to have some type of continuity so that we start looking like we know and we're thinking about what we're doing for the future, not just because it's the thing to do and it's fashionable. What's fashionable now, and we discussed this in the past, may not be fashionable in the next 20, 30 years. Baldwin Park is an old town, like a lot of cities, like Azusa, like Monrovia, like Covina, but it seems like they always follow a certain design protocol, whether it's the tile roofs, which we have here in this building, whether it's the frontage that may still look more or less like it did, but making it look modern and, and sort of inviting for people to come, and especially to walk around and shop or have fun. There's a contemporary field that you can use that I've seen in other cities that Baldwin Park really lacks. It almost looks like when someone comes to us, we just settle, and we shouldn't. We shouldn't do that. We're better than that, and we deserve better than that. And so, I'm concerned about the four stories on Bedio. I'm concerned about the congestion. Like, I have mentioned to you before, I live near there, and you never reached out to any of my neighbors. I asked them yesterday and today, and you never reached out, like you had promised, to tell them that there's a four-story building that may be coming. I, I spoke to some other people from Rome Coaches, they're not very happy about this coming across the street from where they are. So, let me kind of add in there. The other thing that I see is serious gentrification spending. And yesterday, all over the news, there was that Marnian, and I'm sure you're not relocating people, I understand that. Nevertheless, it happened with the Rome project. I would say 80% of our residents that applied did not qualify, and I, that hurts me to see that happen, to bring in construction, to bring in buildings, and to bring in habitat where our old people cannot live there. And I'm not saying for you to bring in projects, I'm not, I'm not saying that, because there are a lot of people that could have qualified for some of the Rome, but they did not for whatever reason. However, I would like to see that instead of that, for us to take a good look at what we're doing here, you have a piece of property that belongs to the school district, and even though you're considering it a park, have you already spoken to the school district to see if they're, they're allowing you to have that piece of land across the street here?
We have not talked to the school district, and the school district part is not incorporated as a lot of, it's a.
So, you're going to build around it and just leave it there?
It's open space. If you look at that triangle piece, that signifies the.
Yeah, so, you know, so I'm looking at, we're always rushed.
I would like more time to take a look at this. I mean, we already went with the Monovilla Housing for about a year, which was like a brick building at other locations. And where are they now? They're not here anymore, you are. So, I, I would really like, and I would really like for Councilmember Lydia to be here because she was working on the plan for the park, which she mentioned to you, and I would really like to bring this back so that she can be here. Unfortunately, she had an appointment and was not able to be here. And like I said, why are we always in a rush? Why are we always seeming like we're so desperate?
Well, let me, let me answer a couple of questions. First of all, regarding the, Bedio's not a four-story. We specifically talked about a three-story. Bedio's not a four-story, but it's a three-story. Secondly, regarding the neighbors on the Bedio site, we've had an enormous amount of work to do. We've reached out to the neighbors that are contiguous to the sites. We've reached out and talked to those neighbors. We haven't had a chance to do our community outreach where we have communities and by everybody at 500-foot, 700-foot, 1,000-foot radius. We completely plan on doing that. To, for the purposes of getting this done, we've had market studies, financial underwriting, talking to neighbors, assemble, not assemble, look to extend it to the car wash, not to extend it. There's a lot of work to do.
Oh, and I have to change.
And we, and I mean, but if, if I was supposed to do that before I get back to this point, I apologize.
Yes, you were.
No, I apologize for that. As far as the design, don't get caught in the design. We presented about eight different types of elevation characteristics. Design-wise, it can be contemporary, it can be traditional, it can be Spanish. For us, we want to, we want to do what the city wants to see. That's really the most important part is related to that. And as far as, as, as why are we leaving so fast? I first presented this to you a year and a half ago. That's not fastening.
No, 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 I understand that, but then you, we didn't see you for a long time.
Which, because 200 people.
And I felt that there was plenty of time for, for you to have done the community outreach. And I understand that you're very busy with, with all of the marketing and all of the research that you have to do, but, you know, it's, it's almost like we all, we always do the cart before the horse. And, you know, I would really like to see that community outreach, and if the people say, you know, especially the people in these areas that are so congested as it is in Ramona, right now we're battling train noise and congestion and, and all at the same time.
But, let me say this to you. This city references Monrovia a lot and I'm from that city, and I know Monrovia as good as anybody. And I've worked on another site in the downtown transit working area off of the word, maybe 300 units though. I know the Paragon very well. Myrtle is about a third the size of Ramona. It's one lane, one lane each. It's got a street park, and that's it. Ramona's got two or three lanes in traffic. It's twice a bit. The Paragon is a 160-unit project that sits right in the middle of Myrtle. And that project, it's a, it's a, it's a wrap product. It's a five-story, very dense project, so it was 60 per acre, we're half that size. That project sits on Myrtle, and it parks just fine. It's got access to the streets that run behind it, and parks just fine. It didn't reinvigorate a lot of the retail and a lot of the customer businesses along Myrtle Avenue. Right now, Contra's played across the street from the Paragon, also on Myrtle, without any street widening, is another 130-unit project, and they're planning 800 units right down the street to transit village. That's what's happening just on Myrtle in Monrovia. And if you go up again, Myrtle, you'll see the types of businesses that I hear in Baldwin Park saying that they want on time. This is a 70-minute project and a 40-minute project. It's very, they're very small, you know, two separate, separate sites. It's 110 units in a vast downtown which is part of the park. I submit that the city desperately needs this type of housing and this type of resident tenant and this type of development to spur more of it. I think there should be more of it. I think this is just a beginning of what should happen in Baldwin.
Okay, but let me ask you something. As I'm familiar with Ramona, Ramona had the stores and the restaurants first when they, when they upgraded their downtown area and brought in the street market and a lot of the cigar shops and the Percorian and all the other things that they brought in there. Then they built the apartments and the, and the, and the condos. I, I go to Ramona very frequently, so I'm very familiar, including with the ones that are being built on Lemon or whatever that street is, just west of Myrtle, just west of Myrtle. It's a one-way from the city, then if you make a U-turn like that, they're right there on the line. Whoever's building was, they're very, very nice. I really like them. I really like the ones that are going up in West Covina where that furniture store used to be. The design of those are, they're beautiful. They really truly are, and I think Baldwin Park deserves something like that.
Well, that's what we're doing.
But I really do believe that if we're popping up with Bedio and we're popping up over here, I don't think that our infrastructure's going to be able to handle that. I really truly don't.
Mayor, if I, if I, okay, I'd like to ask, because one of the concerns last time was whether we're going to use this property. Are you guys buying this property or are you just going to consider it?
No, we're going to be able to pay.
You're going to pay, we're going to pay.
We're going to pay, we're going to pay, we're going to provide the financial underwriting to the city, and the city's going to have a third-party independent group review our valuation of the property to make sure that it's not given that fair based on the development cost.
And what about property tax? Are, are, is this unit going to be a property tax?
Of course.
Property tax.
Yes. Yeah. When we proceed, proceed, if we proceed to develop this position here, we'll have Tastic and Associates prepare a fiscal impact study, which will show the impacts this project will have on the local economy based on a number of benefits. Property taxes will share, state takes their share, city gets their share, all sorts of permits and fees that we're going to pay for, disposable income, SCS tax, the general for the city. It'll cover, you can take it in detail.
Yeah, I'm a supporter of, you know, I know we have a difference of opinion about how, how this is, but a lot of consultants have come in and talked about bringing in, you know, high density around the downtown to be able to support the downtown area, I mean, not just your group, but, you know, John Bellman said it, and several other groups for a long time have talked about developing this, you know, density downtown to be able to support a downtown business. And I think once you've seen, you know, Rome come around and the other developments start to grow, you're going to begin to generate a lot of interest. And I will not talk to the city staff, there's a lot of other developers that are coming to Baldwin Park, and it's kind of changed the way development is because in the past, the city had to give a lot. And now, because we've developed this all along, there are developers that truly can provide a large project and have the funds to use and the capacity, they're the ones to be bought down. At the alley fitness, when I was talking to some of the developers there, and, and they talked about not just doing alley fitness, their interest are there, but they also want to do other projects around downtown. So, there's, there's a lot of the development industry, there's a lot of interest, and they're bringing their own resources and buying land and trying to improve, you know, a lot of our projects. And I know that you went along with a specific plan, as we, and, and you said, and you've been, one with a specific plan, which is something we as a city, all of us here have supported and adopted, and so this falls within the specific plan, that criteria that we're looking for. I know a lot of us refer to Covina and Monrovia, you know, and I spend a lot of time, you know, and I've worked in Santa Monica, and I've seen you look at how the high density is, is brought in, and you're talking about using like, and, or above, the first story of the building is parking, is that what I'm looking at? So, that's the style that Monrovia uses, that Santa Monica uses, too, but there's not a lot of traffic, and, you know, and I've driven around those towns a lot and worked there, in the years that I've been there, and there's a way to control that traffic and that density so that it's not interfering with a lot of our traffic. There's other issues other than the building to be able to control the traffic that's going through there, which is another project we're working on, to be able to control the traffic around this area, so. But I think in order to get, and I know what, what, you know, the process is you do it like E&amp;A, and if there's an interest, you go to the DDA. And the DDA requires a lot more planning, a lot more view, going outreach, and so, I mean, I appreciate that the E&amp;A business, most developers, they're, you know, they put in some studies and bring it forward, you know, to the city. So, I think if we go to the next level, which is no commitment, but is to look at a lot of the, the council is, is talking about, and looking at traffic studies a lot more closely, getting on the community, and bringing about a policy that we're all in, so this is more conceptual than it is actual, what we're going to do, so.
If I can make a comment, I would like to see a lot of the design elements of this, so, like, I'm looking at this site plan and I'm seeing that there's a parking that kind of wraps around, is that right, in the front here? I'm just wondering during the DDA talks, how we might be able to screw that up to make it more aesthetically, you know, easy, and so that when you're dragging by, you know, on Pacific or your visiting City Hall, that it feels more like a courtyard versus, kind of like a.
Parking hall.
No, and I agree, because I want to know, are you, are there going, is there, are the cars going to be under some type of a cardboard or in through some type of a shade or shelter or something?
The tan shading area is all inside. All of this is internal parking.
But the gray area?
And the gray area is, is currently open park, is proposed as open parking.
It's like the visitor parking?
The visitor, yes, parking, et cetera.
And sure, and public parking. We thought that's a nice area for a street, a type of a street festival type of, you know, public.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sure, I mean, it's like designing the elements of that. And then I'd like to see the elevation, so like, when you're saying that you looked at reinforced area, I'd like to see how that speaks to the existing structures along Ramona. And, like, you know, see where you're thinking of, like, using transitional height, so that it's not so much massing on the, the main streets, when you're driving by, you have this come across a big mass. I'd like to see some more of those elements. I mean, I.
As we get, and, and I, I hesitate to even say that I'm in the design phase. We're in the conceptualization kind of vision stage and kind of moving pieces around, right? Very loose and getting the feedback from, from you folks. One of the benefits of being an architect today versus when I started my career. These images that you see that obviously are not constructed yet, kind of these three-dimensional models, if you will, the program allows us to drop that into Google Earth. All of our presentations ultimately are on video. We're flying you around, we're walking you through the site. So, and then also allowing us to see the, the relationship between City Hall, these three- and four-story buildings, and, and the Ramona fabric. So, all of that helps as we work through this, not only for ourselves, but for planning staff and, and, you know, you folks in the community.
And I agree with the Councilmember Garcia, the pro-mayor for Town Garcia, I'm sorry. I would like to see that as well, but also I have a question. Who will be doing the traffic study? Is that something that the city, an expense that the city's going to incur? Or is that an expense that you as the builder, as the developer will incur? Because, you know, the, the density brings more cars, like I said, which means that you're looking, how many units are?
About 70.
Okay, so you're looking at about another 140 cars. You have a type of built, of parking structure across the street. You still have to deal with the Rome project, and everyone's banking on the fact that a lot of those people aren't going to have a car, that I don't see that, not right now, I don't see that possible. However, I would like to, I would like to know who is, who is going to incur the cost for the traffic study and any other infrastructure studies that you, that you need in order for your building to be built.
Okay, let me answer that. So, I'm assuming that when the specific plan overlay was done for this downtown area, I don't know if everybody that's here on council tonight voted on that, but again, we designed this project in accordance with. So, I thought there was, I thought that most of the council was on board if they supported that, and those are going to be some housing developed, you know, transit-oriented fashion value. Be that as it may, environmental impact report, I'm sure was done for that specific plan, and we usually work with the cities, and we usually pay for that, and I don't have a problem with that. We usually find out who did the original traffic study, because a specific plan was done and approved by this council to allow for this type of housing downtown. So, I'm assuming that they look at what the traffic impact could be of housing like this. So, we will piggyback off of that, specific to our projects, specific to the street environments[1785.33] as they currently exist, and then we'll present that out to the city.
Let me just say, for one, obviously, we don't have the, the, um, RDA, you know, developing, so, they're basically, just so everyone knows, they're paying out of their own pocket, because they're buried, they're paying market value for the actual city parcel area, correct? Second, you're not, I assume you're probably not gonna have any government money involved with it, it's federal money, right? So the difference, just to answer a question, Councilwoman, and I hear you, what you said, that a big portion of our residents were unable to pay, or actually able to run some of the Rome project, because we know there was federal money involved, so you have to open up to everyone. I mean, wish it was just in BP, of course, but that didn't happen. There's seventy, what, total, seventy units, total, three thousand people, like, two hundred run the actual list that made, and then from there, they pick up the setting and go. So I just wanna, I just wanna show the difference between the wrong company and you, because it's totally different.
Yes, yes, and I'll make this point, the MARS study was very specific, it talks about the bottom line. It says both sites are very walkable, one site more so, which is the main Pacific site, and suited for small households, one, two, or three occupants earning under eighty percent AMI at key income price point for this submarket of Ballpark. Each property will offer modern communities, not now available in Ballpark conventional apartment style, but different features and elevations, each location will create new choices for residents that are not existing. And so that's a point, so it will, you, more residents target income to be on.
Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, if.
I just, I just wanted to make that, um, on the, on the versus, of course, that I want to, um, to emphasize this.
To do a podium tucked under parking condominium for sale, with this type of construction cost isn't feasible, the market's not there for the condominiums, it's more costly than the cost of nothing. There's no market, the only places where they're building that type of podium or subterranean parking, that type of condominium project is outside of LA, West Hollywood, Westwood and Beverly Hills, where the price points are eight to nine hundred dollars a square foot, so you look for construction class. This, is it a low value, what's that, as in, as for asset, as in?
Mayor, if I may, I think because there's a lot of questions, I will still kind of get a bit of background, but I think if we will win to the, to the DDA negotiation party, they'll be able to provide us more information before we go final DDA study. I would make a motion to move into negotiating with the, and let staff work on that.
So they can start back?
Yeah, let's get back to that.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, no, our questions, first of all, I know, does it, man, hard guy's gonna try to not come to the school district, or hard guy's gonna work around?
They actually talked about earlier what's gonna happen, they're not going to even cover that, because I said that's gonna mean, didn't he?
So, that blacked out a triangle, it's inside open space, there'd be no construction on it other than surface improvement, you know, paving.
But, excuse me, let me ask you something, then why did you get public plaza there? And you've been moving your own?
It is essentially a public plaza now, it's just an unapproved public plaza.
Well, this is, this is.
It's a parking lot.
Okay.
It's a parking lot.
I guess, from my view, if, as a designer, if I let those things kill my project, I'd be out of business, I wouldn't design the same thing.
Oh, no, no, that's a whole thing.
So, I see that as an opportunity to, to work with the school district if need be, just as, as the other, you know, the center, the center potential, you know, potential future connection through the, through the middle, or, you know, down at the end of the site, in the alley. There's so many opportunities on this, and yeah, there's a lot of challenges, but it is a, it's an incredibly important site, I agree with you.
You know that, you know that he had worked a year and a half on the civic plaza?
Yes, very familiar.
And that's why I asked, why did you want a public plaza there and across the street? And I know that it's just a selling point for you, so it makes it look nicer, it's like the same.
Well, I think the one, true, the one that is.
Hold on, hold on, right, hold on. Just, just like, you know, it, and I understand, from a marketing perspective, it sounds better public plaza than it does parking lot, when realistically, it is a parking lot, but I understand from a marketing point of view, when you sit down.
But there was an earlier study that we had seen that had the center, basically, it was a kind of a U-shaped building, all the parking was back here, and that was a private amenity space in the front, there was an earlier study prepared.
Who was that?
There was then, you know, we look, we look at the opportunities here, you know, potentially with the car wash and the McDonald's going, how does that edge ultimately meet, meet the civic? You know, the, we had, I had considered even in building this entire edge, but that across from City Hall is not the correct response either. This may not be the final plan at all, it may, it may evolve to something completely different.
Yes, it was just, yes, it was just a question, and to me, you know, and I always think about the residents, and we understand it, but it's deceiving for the residents to see that, because the first thing that they're going to ask is, where is that public plaza?
Right, so to the degree that the school district gets upset and says, no, that's it, it's our property, we're gonna put a fence around it, or, there's a, or there's a use agreement that says, yes, there's, there's an allowance for use, and, you know, obviously, a lot of things need to be discussed.
That would be ideal, but for now, maybe we just keep blanking. And also that public plaza across the street, because unless you're planning on building that, you see that little, that U-shaped by the city hallers? Unless you're planning on building that, that's also deceiving, because that's part of the design that we have in the park, so.
And that's what we kind of keyed off of as an element to discuss.
But that doesn't exist right now.
Let me just tell you quick, because I know it's conceptual at this point, so this particular, the main street, is that going to be an accessible street for traffic, or is that?
That's parking.
Is that just off?
It's parking, the degree to which it allows connection for public use to be determined.
So is that in front of the church, it'll have parking as well?
We can talk about the modesty, yeah.
Excuse, in front of the church, you know, the Methodist church is right there across the street from the corner, next to the, the car washing essence. Does that mean that they will have parking in front of the church as well, and they're blocking off Main Street, or probably what do you do there?
Well, he parked in the back, they don't, they don't park right here.
No, and I understand, the church is, I'm not, I'm not talking about because of the church, because I don't have nothing to do with that, but I just wanna envision, are you blocking off Main, and there's gonna be y'all parking along there, just so that I can envision it myself.
I, because this is all conceptual, I think we're gonna continue discussing how the pieces go together.
Well, that's why I said, could we bring this on to August, that you can digest this and take a good look at this?
Well, you still have an opportunity, because there's a DDA negotiation, so we can bring it back.
So at this point?
Yeah, but I'd like to go ahead.
There's a motion, is there a second?
If I'm hearing correctly, I'm not giving an objection.
No, you're gonna, hold on, but there's a motion?
Okay, hold on, I'm asking.
There's a second, but go ahead, it's a question.
I have several questions. How do we justify to our residents closing a public street, which helps them get access to the freeway, for a parking lot that's gonna benefit a developer and not for public use?
Wasn't that part of the?
No, it was not. I could justify closing a street where cars.
First of all, this is a conceptual.
That's what, that's why you guys keep pointing around it, this is not conceptual. Number one, number two, how do we explain to the church has been faked, and the reason we thought about the, the park, because they have a child care there, and one of their biggest concerns was other traffic going by, and they've been asking for a long time to close it and put something safer. Now we're building parking spaces, we're trying to keep.
Well, let me just say, I am definitely gonna have an issue with that street being blocked up, the direction, and that's okay, because I definitely wanna see it be a dove street, a street like that. Either way, this is a conceptual at this point, and I know it's gonna come back, and we'll look at the type of, type of designs.
I have one more concern. How are we gonna, how are we gonna justify half a million dollars for a park plaza? Who's gonna take care of that from you? Because if we're not gonna build a park, then we're gonna build a park somewhere else, and we need that half a million back. That is taxpayer money that we need to justify, and we already spent it with your permission two years ago, we all agreed, and that money was already spent, so it's half a million dollars, how do we justify to our residents? I'm sorry, you don't want to that question?
Well, first of all, that's, that's fine. First of all, the project in total, the one you're proposing, and I didn't support it at the beginning, the unfortunate part, that project, I'm being a front, was done behind my back, I didn't know, hold on, hold on, hold on, it was eventually presented to me, the council, I don't believe, was informed in general. I've had no direct participation, I did hold on it, because I believed the council was good. Now, we're looking at a project that I believe is three phases, that will amount to six million dollars. There is no, there is no, there's not gonna be any type of tax benefit for the residents, there's a park right across the street. Now, we're talking about placing that type of project house where you build a full-blown park, that's fine, just like the soccer proposal I seen on, on the ball, that's different, but at this point right now, you know what, I can't see us putting millions of more dollars into this particular park plaza when there's a park within walking distance of this particular parcel now. I'll work on another potential one, but that, for me, does not make, what we're gonna do at this point, we're not gonna spend our money. These individuals here are going to invest thousands or a couple million, whatever the case may be, for the project itself, which is a better investment versus us costing money, something that's not going to make us any type of tax benefits long, long term.
So, for the record, I just wanted to say something.
Sure.
We did not work on the park plaza behind the back, in fact, at the street fair last year, you announced that it was being, that it was being considered, and that you were very happy that the people of Ballpark needed another park, and if, I don't know if it was recorded, but I remember hearing you announce it at the, at the street fair, right there on Main Street, in front of the Superior Grocers, and you announced it. Nothing was done behind anybody's back, everybody was invited, we had Dan Wall, we had Mark Castanola, we had Manny Correo, we invited anybody that wanted to come in to give the design as to what they would like as far as lights and everything. Everyone had the opportunity to say what they wanted, but nothing was done behind anybody's back.
Well, let me just say.
Here, I, I was gonna speak after.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So I made a motion to, to let staff, to work with this developer, I mean, EMA negotiations, to bring it back.
Okay, there was a second?
EMA?
I'm sorry, EMA. Okay, it was seconded by Vice Mayor, you guys see any objections?
Yes.
Okay, now, this time, we're gonna go ahead and go have a, go past our vice president.
Okay, so, for the motion for a DDA, okay, so, Pacheco?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Rubio?
Yes.
Bosano?
Yes.
Mbak?
No.
Okay, so this one, you, hold on. The three, the three, the two?
Yes, and that was for, for both projects.
Yes, that is right.
For both projects, the DDA for both, the, the double project and the one here in the main street.
Okay, so go for that.
Well, just to record, you said six million dollars, and then it's out there, it's get, it's not six million dollars, we just did it at a very strategic point. Ballpark, I mean, it's been up for a while, and I think that for just a bit, we're not gonna remember this yet, going back to my university, and how our communities used to be sort of patchwork, one day we do one thing, another day we do another thing, and everything seems to not match. The design was designed in three phases, and the only reason we did it in three phases, because we're gonna design something to help the street come to City Hall, we wanted to have a plan for in the future, we had a need to, to upgrade City Hall, we have the specs and everything ready to go, so it would match with the park plaza, it wasn't intended to be built, it was intended to be there, so in the future, we would have three phases that actually, one side will work together, the elements in terms of, you know, the material, the walkways, everything would make sense. If you look around our community, sometimes we have alleyways and that would match, so it's not six million dollars, it was three million dollars. And we part of all, because we sat there and we negotiated at least two point seven million dollars for the billboards, which I strongly opposed, and I said, the only reason I could support something like that, you know, makes our community a little less aesthetic easy, because I can tell my residents that we will have a park for them, that was the exchange. So for now, for us to say we don't have money, we say we don't have money, like, yeah, we thought we spent half a million dollars, and we're gonna put it away, how do we justify that? And then we can say we don't have money. So I want you to contract today, tonight, half a million dollars, I'm gonna find you over half a million when we get to a council meeting.
Mayor, no, no, hold on.
I can give you one to fear, but hold on, that's. Okay, I'll be real quick, I did not make any promises, because we're missing from the body, but, but you said something about me, and I never made any, any agreements with you regarding the funding, but let me do this, I'd like to, I'd like staff to do a financial analysis on whether or not the city has six point five million in general funds or special funds to do the civic center project, because to be specifically responsible, we should have a financial plan to pay for the civic center project. And to start this project without the money in paper would be specifically irresponsible, and would be a waste of our taxpayers' dollars. Councilor Rubio has stated for several meetings in a row, that she wants to save money by looking at four contracts worth a total of four hundred thousand dollars yet, she now claims that she wants to spend six point five million that we not have for her pet project. This project will not benefit the community because it's a park, and we have a park, it's more than park across the street. So I looked at this project, we did talk about it, and I found out it was six point five million dollars, money that we don't have, I could not support this project, so because we don't have the money. And finally, so what I'd like to do is that at every council meeting under my request, I wanna put the following, do we have six point five million for the civic center park? Under our current funds, and when we do, we can talk more about it, but for now, because this developer is funding the whole project, and it could, because we're still in the negotiating fund, put in a civic center into this project, as we discuss it, we could do that, so thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I know you took, but you give me five seconds. If we're talking about finances, we might as well give it to an issue, and it doesn't involve you, so that's okay. Where there has been over three hundred thousand dollars that has already been paid to consultants that have frivolously spent the money, so if you're talking about money that's been spent, that hasn't, at least we're looking at something that was going to be for our communities, not just to put in the pockets of other people.
Okay, so at this point, let me just, I'll go back to go off, you know, say, exact, ballpark, a track runner, just graduated from cancer, and he came very close to the family, still have the whole term, but, I just wanna say, the hodgepodge in this city that we're talking about started prior to me leaving here in nineteen seventy-nine, people would come to ballpark and ask, where are these certain communities out there? Well, some of the politicians, and I won't mention their names, that were here, they're in the nineteen fifties, they're in the sixties, I should, sixty, seventies, the eighties, those are the ones who asked what they did, and they professed, they moved out of the city, because they didn't wanna live here. That's when the hodgepodge should have been, and people should have been more involved with that particular time.
Yes, but it's our responsibility for you to fix it, especially those that have been on the council a long time.
Yeah, we got into that.
It doesn't look like it.
Mayor, I'm gonna tell you something, there has been a lot of development for your council and for your council that has happened in this city, that a lot of people are proud of, I mean, companies like, I'm talking, Harge Davidson, the Home Depot stuff, which was a disaster, it used to be the boss pavilion, we kept it there because we wanted to save taxes, but that's what we found out, we brought Home Depot in there, right? And then we brought in, you know, the Warrens, so, there's a lot of good developments, if you sit there and start to say that we're, we're hodgepodge and not bringing, you haven't brought in, and the alley fitness was on hold, on hold for how many years?
That's right.
Okay, so we started to make changes on staff, now this was happening today. That project is moving forward, our old builders out there right now making that project. Try to take the issue with you, when you sit there and start to say that this city isn't moving forward, maybe you don't wanna move forward.
I never said that.
No, speaking, but I'm speaking.
I never said that.
Go ahead, continue.
If you're the one that wants to go back and not change and keep the city the way it is, that's your style, that's fine, I agree with it, but I'll make sure that the community knows that you don't want any progress, you wanna keep it as is and not move forward.
Okay, at this point, I didn't, I didn't excuse myself.
That's okay, if that's what you want to say, that's fine, we're, we're totally into.
Well, and I think that, I think that is really our responsibility of taking up a new project, and that's, and that's why we do that, and like, the Rome project, I mean, Susan, you were there, Ricardo, you came in at the end, and we were part of the design of after those projects, along with the project, and from the practical work, so that falls on us, and it also falls on us in this specific plan, so we'll be doing that, you know.
Yes, and I think it's a good, and the only reason I bring it out is only because I think that we can fix it. I'm not saying that I don't wanna move forward, I'm not saying any of the things that Ricardo Pacheco tried to put it in, in words that described what I was saying, which that wasn't at all what I was saying, I'm very much for progress, as long as it's done correctly and it's not lining the pockets of certain people. I'm very much for progress, as long as it's done correctly and it's not lining the pockets of certain people.
And to that, I will say, you know, I didn't say hodgepodge, you asked me to justify the six million dollars, and I said there is no six million dollar...
I said hodgepodge.
Well, yeah, the only reason I brought that word is because, again, when planning for the future, we need a uniformity, and that is why we planned it in three phases in the future. We have all the specs, if we wanted to upgrade the surrounding area, everything would match. But it's not a six million dollar project, it's just there, so ten years from now, we don't upgrade the city hall, and it becomes a different color or a different style, it wouldn't just, we need uniformity. That's the one thing, I think, besides all the wonderful development that we've had, you know, from Home Depot and all of that, we're talking about the downtown, and we're talking about a vision for the future. I believe that a park plaza would bring higher property values, and I even believe it would encourage other people to build around that, including, you know, multi-use housing and storefronts and... But no one's gonna wanna come in when we have apartment buildings right in the middle of the city. I think a plaza would encourage a much bigger development in the future in terms of the surrounding areas. So I think we're being short sighted, I think that we need something open, big in the center, because I believe Mr. Warren also said about a project in Monrovia. Yeah, the project in Monrovia is next to the Library Park, which is acres of green space and a water fountain. It's not just condensed in one area, it's very different. And so, it's not a six million dollar project.
If you're gonna, okay, hold on, let me just, okay, I, I've got about two minutes.